I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for Monday, July 21st, 2025. Could you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perform a roll call at this time. Councillor Benson?
Present.
Councillor Peterson?
Present.
Councillor Johnson?
Present.
Councillor DeWolfe?
Present.
Mayor Ward's also in attendance. Please let the minutes reflect all others in attendance. At this time, we'll resume the public hearing for proposed Resolution 20-25, vacate a portion of First Street between North Second Avenue and U.S. Highway 2. On the public comment, the public hearing is when the city offers a time to address City Council regarding the proposed Resolution 20-25, vacate a portion of First Second Street between North Second Avenue and U.S. Highway 2. As a rule, the council will listen to all comments, questions, or concerns. If you'd like to address City Council during public hearing, please come forward to the podium. Before you begin, please state your name and address for the public hearing minutes. To ensure that those in attendance have an opportunity to address the City Council, we will allow three minutes per speaker. Anyone addressing the City Council will be prohibited from using obscene, profane, or threatening language or boisterous conduct that disrupts a public hearing or the security of the public. At this time, we will begin the public hearing and open the floor to anyone wishing to speak. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the Resolution 20-25 at this time? Hearing none.
I'm not sure, I guess. Maybe you see what it is.
So this is the public hearing where we're looking at vacating First Street? The hill that goes up right across from City Hall here?
Okay, so we're located at 318 Third Avenue. Does that affect? Will that affect us? Or? And we're purely here to see what the project is.
Sure.
So maybe we won't need to speak at all?
No, well, you want to hit that, or do you want me to?
Yeah, so it does not affect your address. It's just this one very short section of First Street. We are required by law to give notification to people in the plat where the street is located, so that's why you received a notification.
Okay, then yeah, we don't need to speak.
So we're just vacating the hill going up?
I have a question about, you know, when the snowplow comes through, it won't go through anymore. So does that mean all the snow is going to be pushed into my front yard? And I'll have a mound of snow there? Or will they turn in my yard and go back the other way, taking the snow with them? Do you have an idea?
So typically how they operate that is they'll push the snow towards the dead end. They'll, most of the time, haul it out with a dump truck. They'll scoop it up and haul it back out.
On that day, or two months later?
No, I can't confirm that it'll be that day, but it won't be two months down the road. They'll get rid of the snow as need be, right? If it starts becoming too high. And I don't know exactly how far down the hill from the next house, but is there's...
It's marked on the street where the street will end.
Well, it ends right at the end.
Right at your?
Yeah.
Okay.
So right where, whenever we look out of the window, all I'm going to see is a mound of snow, by the sounds of it?
No, because what is that road up by the church there? Oak? Not Oak, it's up by Barnell's.
Grove.
Grove, yeah. They have the same thing on Grove Street. Dead end's there right before 2. And they don't have big piles of snow sitting there all winter long. So that's a few blocks up from you, bud.
And also the garbage truck, will they be turning in my driveway, too?
I can't speak for that, but I would assume no.
Because they won't be able to go through, so then they're going to back out?
I don't have an answer for how they're going to do their operations. I can't speak for another entity, so. Go ahead.
Generally speaking, Hartel's, for example, our local garbage company, they won't turn in a personal driveway, because they don't want to be responsible for damage that's done to that driveway. So they will either back in and get all the garbage and work their way out, is most likely what I see them doing. They're not going to pull in forward. But that would be, as Mayor indicated, a question to your garbage company and how they'll... I just know I live on a dead end, and had a pretty nice driveway, and they told me they'd never turn in it, because they didn't want to get a bill for what it would cost or place the damaged driveway. As far as back to your snow issue, you know, most of that snow is going to go down the hill, so I don't picture you ever having a 20-foot snow mountain to block your view.
But what is blocking the road, though? Is it concrete? Bolts across the road? Or is it going to be a couple of big rocks? So what is going to block the road?
There'll be signage blocking, for sure.
The signs?
Well, if you go down St. Louis River Road, is it? Where a road ends, there's permanent signage.
Big red and white wooden blockages?
There will be, yeah. We have to warn traffic that it's a dead end.
I would assume there'll be a sign, a dead end, a sign placed at the intersection of Second Levake and First, right out there, just like you would on any normal dead end. So most of the people will read that a lot, won't at first, and they'll have to go in there and turn around. But I don't know that there's going to be enough room. I don't know about a hammerhead turnaround.
Yeah.
And I would assume they're going to put some kind of a cement barricade, or a rock, or something that looks halfway decent for safety purposes.
And on Highway 2 end, they're redoing Highway 2, so there won't even be an entrance going up the hill anymore.
I'm concerned about people going up the hill, it's just coming down the road.
Sure, sure.
And mainly the garbage truck and the snowplow.
Anybody else? Nope? Any other comments? Hearing none. We'll ask one more time. Any other comments for public?
You all heard most of my comments a couple weeks ago. If you ever took a look up at the... From straight out front up here, look up, First Street, it bottlenecked at the top of the hill. If that road were as wide as the curbs are at the bottom, all the way up, the cars coming from the other way wouldn't be moving over as close to the center of the road as they would to come down. I would suggest that also the fact that that hill is so rough. The rest of the road is very good condition, basically. It's never been touched in the 52 years I had my rental. The hill has, but not the flat. If they cut that blacktop out, or resurfaced it out to as wide as that curb is, that road would be plenty wide for cars going up and down. And that they took the parking off both sides of the street. Right now, if you come up the hill, and if there's a car parked on the right-hand side, then you obviously wind up out into the middle of the road when you come up. Same thing when you're coming down. If there's cars parked on the north side, you're moving over to the center to go around them. Up until a year ago, even some of the employees of one of the local places in town here parked right on the hill. But if you eliminate... Even if you didn't eliminate the parking all the way back to Second Avenue, even if you just took it 100 feet back from the top of the hill there, it... That would eliminate these cars moving over so much to the center of the road when they come up. As far as the plowing goes, I think I mentioned last time I was here that I talked to Rick Lalanne, and he said there's been a few times when he went to plow up and he'd spin out and he'd have to back down and push it again. I guess a few times in as many years as Rick's lived or worked for the city, I don't think that's really too bad. And if plowing became that much of a problem, they could put that big blower on the front of their skid steer, and they could either go up or down with that, just to clear that hill off, if it were that bad. One of the other things that's mentioned on that flyer that... I see they had a bunch of them laying on the counter out here when they come in to pay your utility bill, but that doesn't inform too many of the people that live up there. I have talked to several of the people that live there, the occupants of the street, not necessarily the owners. In this case, I guess it was the owners. Without mentioning no name, one of them lives right at the very first... South side, the first house going up. He says, "My driveway is not going to be a turnaround." He's really against that. And I know it's a turnaround, because when I had my rental up there, I had cars turning around, including the garbage truck. So that's not a hard... It's a hard thing to eliminate. I also talked to one of the persons down next door to where my rental was, on the east side. He said, what he doesn't like is... He likes the police protection he gets right now. He says, "The police cars up and down the street over there more than anybody else, because, you know, they come right straight up from here." So he says, "I would hate to lose that." And then also, he's concerned about what's the process going to be on the snow plowing, and of course, I don't know how that is there, but if they ain't plowing that street through, they generally come back to it later with the loader or the one ton to plow that street. Now, I started to mention, another thing I seen on that sheet was that the... Is it the state or whoever? Doesn't like to have these... They want to eliminate as many of these streets that enter the highway. What they're trying to eliminate is them streets that come in at an angle to the highway, not the ones that come in very close to straight in.
Well, I would disagree with you on that, because I know M.D. was even talking about closing the entrance of Second Avenue to Highway 2, because they don't like all the access roads coming out.
Yeah, Second Avenue, one comes in at an angle to the highway. You almost have to turn around and look in your backseat, see if cars are coming from the other way.
Well, because it's coming around the corner, but it's coming straight onto the highway.
Yeah. It doesn't... It does not tee straight off the highway. So... Other than that, I didn't talk to the people at the far end of the street, because it's almost not... Well, one of them accesses onto Second Avenue already, and the one on the opposite side, they just come right around the corner off of Second Avenue into their driveway, so I don't suppose it's... It's one of those that doesn't make no difference to me. I talked to the one that... Other party that lives on the north side of the street, just today I talked to him, and he said that... In one essence, it doesn't make much difference to him, because he goes automatically out to Second Avenue anyway. And I know he does, because he used to make the U-turn in my driveway over there. Until I got onto him, I said, "I don't drive in the grass." But...
Three minutes is coming.
But other than that, he says it might be safer for kids. He says, "Though nobody's ever got hurt on the street over here," he said, "it might be safer." Well, that's... That may be a given, you know, that if you take away this, it's not going to be there. But... And I don't live over there, but I kind of tend to look for the better in things, and I don't think that closing a street off is for a betterment in this case. I don't... I do not see that as being any kind of progress at all.
Thank you. Your three minutes.
Pardon?
Three minutes has been up.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jim.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So this will be on further down the agenda when council discusses this, so if you want to stick around for that, you're more than welcome. But if I'm hearing no other comments, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing and resume the regular city council meeting. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Councillor Benson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Looking for a motion to approve the pre-agenda minutes for Monday, July 7th, 2025. I'll go ahead and make that motion. Is there a second? Hearing no second. Sent by Councillor Peterson. Any further discussion?
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Benson.
In this... In the pre-agenda meeting, we had discussed about council absences and pay, and Councillor DeWolfe had brought up about the carryover from one year to our next on the... Then the proposal before it got onto the regular minutes. And I agreed with it, so I think that was missing.
Where are you seeing that on the pre-agenda minutes, Councillor?
The second M.D. from the bottom. Where it says holiday provisions.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So you're asking that that be added to those minutes?
I'm not sure if it was the pre-agenda meeting or the regular agenda, but I think it was probably...
I'm just looking at the regular minutes here. Okay, we can get that added. Any other discussion on pre-agenda minutes? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Looking for a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes for Monday, July 7th, 2025.
So moved.
Councillor Benson made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Councillor DeWolfe. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Before making that motion, I'd like to add 1F, the quarter financial update. And I'd like to remove 3A, as there was nothing in the packet for that. And with that being said, I'll make a motion to adopt that agenda with those changes.
Second.
Sent by Councillor Peterson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Brings us to comments and suggestions from citizens present. Public comment suggestion period of the meeting is when the city council offers a time for everyone in attendance or watching from home to address the city council. Once we move on from the public comment suggestion period of the meeting, members of the public will no longer be allowed to address the council unless the mayor acknowledges you. As a general rule, the council will listen to all comments but are not required to comment on or respond to any comments made by speakers. If you'd like to address the city council during the public comment suggestion period of the meeting, please come forward to the podium or dial 218-628-6268. Before you begin, please state your name and address for the meeting minutes. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Anyone addressing the city council will be prohibited from using obscene, profane, or threatening language or boisterous conduct that disrupts a meeting or the security of the public. Is there anyone at this time that is interested in participating in the public comment suggestion period of the meeting? If so, please come forward to the podium or dial 218-628-6268, and we'll give that about a minute. We're hearing none, we'll move on. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Before making that motion, I'd like to pull 4A. And I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Move the consent agenda.
Councillor Benson, second set. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. And that will bring us to 4A, city council member absence. In your packet, there's a memo from Administrator Rich regarding the policy that we had just adopted at our last meeting. It seems there were some questions that needed to be addressed in our pre-agenda meeting. Councillor Benson brought up he has a resolution that he'd like to add to the next city council meeting. And with that being said, I guess I would recommend we table this item under unfinished business for our next city council meeting, unless there's discussion to be had. Councillor Benson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to add and repeat myself, I did contact the League of Minnesota Cities, and they do not have a model policy specifically for city council members. I did provide the mayor with a courtesy copy of a proposed resolution. I will have that to Administrator Rich in the next... By Wednesday.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. I'll make a motion to move 4A, city council member absence, to unfinished business. Support? Support by Councillor DeWolfe. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Brings us to 6A under new business, Proclamation 01-25 Rail Safety Week. Every year, CN reaches out to us to see if we would participate in the Rail Safety Week. Looks like this year, we'd like to proclaim September 15th to the 21st, 2025 National Sea Tracks Think Train Week. Just looking for a motion to approve Proclamation 01-25.
So moved.
Councillor Peterson made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Councillor Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Brings us to 6B, PUC Commission Appointment. In your packet, you see the Proctor Public... The Proctor Utility Commission recommends Proctor City Council Repoint Commissioner Troy DeWolfe do another three-year term, expiring August 31st, 2027. Is there a motion to go with the PUC's recommendation?
I move the PUC recommendation.
Councillor Benson made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Councillor Peterson. Any further discussion? Troy, maybe you can answer this, but...
I'm abstaining.
Right, but Administrator Rich, were there... How many applicants were there? Just the one?
One applicant.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. We'll just do a roll call vote with Councillor DeWolfe making a statement of abstainment. So we'll start. Councillor Johnson? Voting to accept?
Accepted.
Councillor Peterson?
Yes.
Councillor Benson?
Yes.
Councillor DeWolfe?
Abstain.
Mayor Ward's a yes, so motion passes four-nothing with one abstain. Congratulations, Councillor DeWolfe. Or Commissioner DeWolfe. Bring us to 6C, Proctor Public Utility and City of Proctor Utility Billing Policy. Again, in your packet, there's a recommendation from the PUC that City of Proctor adopt the attached policy for sewer utility collection. Looking for a motion to approve the new Proctor Public Utility and City of Proctor Utility Billing Policy.
I'll make a motion.
Councillor DeWolfe made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Sent by Councillor Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. And 6D, Resolution 20-25, vacate a portion of First Street between North Second Avenue and U.S. Highway 2. So we've just concluded our public hearing on this matter. We heard from a few residents, two that I believe live on the street, one that does not. Couple of things I would like to add. I wanted to ask Mr. Twami a question, but he's not here, but I was curious as to why the garbage truck turned around in his driveway if the road was open anyway.
I'm assuming it was winter and it was unsafe to go down the hill.
That's what I'm assuming as well. I did reach out to Police Chief Gatus and Fire Department Chief Helquist this morning or just afternoon to see what their opinions on this were. Chief Helquist told me that if they have any emergency, they would prefer to go up and around, rather than going up that hill. And Chief Gatus told me the exact same thing, that the police department doesn't like going up the hill, because you can't see over the top of it. So it's a safety issue there. Rick Lalanne you heard from earlier today on his opinion of it. I have one concern, and it was the lady that was here earlier regarding people turning around in her driveway. I would not like that as a homeowner either. I don't know if there's anything we can do to prevent that. Grove Street, I know it's kind of a bigger area to maneuver. We don't... I don't believe you have to use somebody's driveway. Maybe in a garbage truck you would, but... But as you see in this attachment, that this has been recommended by city staff, including the Fire Department, Public Works, and the police to vacate the street. I know Steve Anderson was here last meeting, talking about closure versus vacating. Administrator Rich, I believe you looked into that, and it's the same process, whether we close it or vacate it. It's the same process that we go through. So I don't know what the difference of that would be.
I think vacating... Attorney might be able to add. Closure is permanent closure. Vacating is... Could be opened up again. Is it not? Are they vacating something?
I think it's actually the opposite.
That's what I thought.
If you're vacating, typically what happens is the...
Well, the official plan of the street goes away and the land under the road goes to, to the adjacent landowners.
Which the, the city would be the adjacent landowners on this, so.
Mayor. I also might, might add, you know, this is, project isn't designed yet, so it's going to be designed, if it's approved, with the 2027 MnDOT project, you could add some elements of public input in on the design, you know, so where it's, where it's vacated and where it ends exactly, is there enough room for snow to be stored, is there enough room for a car to turn around, is there enough room for a garbage truck, those could be addressed in the design of the closure.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'm thinking, but go ahead.
Yeah, okay. See, I see them putting. The metal. Thing there at the top of the hill. And if you go 66 feet, which. That's what the right of way is there. Any kind of a car can turn around there, you know, maybe a truck can't, but a car can. And if you put it at the top of the hill. That's enough space for the snow and that stuff to be even stored there or go down the hill. With it there. So. I don't, that's what I see.
Yeah, and to that point, I guess with a garbage truck, you're paying for their service, call them and tell them, don't turn around in my driveway, they'll, like to councillor DeWalt's point, they'll have to back down the road, I know when I spoke to chief Helquist this morning, he said they prefer to go the other way down Second because the hydrant is right there, so it doesn't make sense to go up the hill and then all the way down the road, they can just come around and be right there, so I know the fire trucks would prefer to go the other way around.
Well, the garbage truck you would think would come down one side and there's only a couple of houses there, make a turnaround and go the other way and hit the other ones if they have them.
I could see that from a safety standpoint, having to drive a truck, it's much safer to head down Second. Facing people approaching you and backing, and then you're just going to catch both sides. And work your way out, no different than when they backed into the Amoco gas station here on the corner off Highway 2, they're pulling so they can see traffic, traffic can see them and they're backing them, and they've got a better, easier, safer way to get out of that, and that, once again, that's just. People, they, they're going to figure out that could be potentially closed and they're going to figure out a different formula for that. And as far as the snow removal, I, I don't really see it being that greatly affected because generally been out there when they're doing this and, and our street foreman's correct. There's a little bit of a delay because he's in the grader, he's doing first, but that motor is right behind hitting the alleys and hitting all the dead ends, because we have a few more up on the bay, two, or at least one, what is it, 14th? I think so, 15th? So I mean, I, I don't see that as being.
On. Sixth Street on the west side is a dead end. Now they do pile snow up there, and I'm thinking that was her concern from that house, but they haul it out.
I just know any area that gets, and it doesn't take two months, they might be in the heat of the battle, but once the snowstorm has stopped, they're on the way what they're going to remove, street department's been very good on that.
And to Administrator Rich's point, we can just make that a priority if we need to, if we don't want snow piling up there, we need to remove it when you guys have a moment.
The problem with the 66-foot road, I don't know that it's actually asphalt at 66 feet across.
Right.
Because there's no curb or gutter up there. You know, this isn't a resurface either, because we have utilities that, if I remember right on our list, are very weak on that street, so it'd have to be complete dead end. But I think Administrator Rich offered some insight where if we can get. I always like to deal with owners of property because they're the one at the end of the day that pays the bill, but if we get them in some kind of a planning stage, so that the dead end, however they block that up, looks cosmetically, and I wouldn't want to be looking at just a pile of rubbish across the road either.
Administrator Rich, you said you did go out and meet with the homeowners, or did you talk to the people that were living there?
I called all of the homeowners.
Homeowners, okay.
Prior, and there were, other than snow removal and turnaround, there were no objections. And I wouldn't even say those were objections, they were just questions. Also, just to remind you too, you also have a 20-foot alley right of way at the end of that street too, so not only do you have the 66 feet, but you also have an additional area for people to turn around in a public right of way, and the resident on the north side of the, she said she was on the end on the north side, that where we have it proposed to be closed off is well beyond her driveway, she made it seem like it was right at her driveway, but it's not up that high.
So maybe just some misinformation.
Maybe she's looking at a different marking, yeah.
Okay, councillor Benson.
I had an opportunity to speak with Jerry Waldhome, who had Waldhome Construction, and more importantly, he served on the street committee for decades, and this was probably 25, 30 years ago, he was, I spoke with him just the other day, and he was telling me the exact same things that are in the finding of fact on the resolution. So the same things existed three decades ago, he was hoping that they'd closed the street back then, and it, he was not surprised it took this long. But he was happy to hear it.
And I guess from my point of view sitting here. I like to be ahead of things, right, I mean, to Jim's point, yeah, there may, may have not been an accident there, somebody getting struck by a car, but do you really want to wait for that to happen before we take action? To councillor Benson's point, this has been on somebody's radar for 30 years now, so it's always been a safety issue, and now it's been brought to us, and I. I guess I'm in favor of it. Councillor Benson.
And to your point, Mr. Mayor, about there hasn't been an accident, there was never an accident on Highway 2 and Second Street until a UMD professor who lived in Proctor got killed, and the lights happened to show up shortly after that, and there was never a problem on Boundary Avenue and Highway 2 until one of my classmates' kids got killed, and then lights appeared there, so it's good to be ahead.
I agree. Any other discussion on that?
Do you need a moment?
Yeah, well, whatever council would like to see done with this Resolution 20-25, we'll entertain a motion. I guess I'll go ahead and I'll make a motion to vacate a portion of First Street between North Second Avenue and US Highway 2, with Administrator Rich's recommendation of including homeowners into the planning process of how that's going to look at the end of the day, that'll be my.
I'll second that.
Uh, do we need a timeframe on this, I mean, are we doing this as MnDOT comes along with their project, so not for a couple of years, this won't be vacated?
Correct.
Do we need a timeline on that, or can we just make a motion to vacate it now and act on it later?
Mr. Mayor, what I'd like to do, since this resolution is in a proposed format, I'd like to, you know, I think the council can vote on, on their decision after considering all the public input today on whether it would be vacated or not, but I'd like to prepare a final resolution for the council to review and pass, and that's what we'll then go, we have to provide that to the county, there has to be some detail in the final resolution. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I'll retract my motion then and change it a little to reflect. To, do we, do we have to adopt that today, or can I, can I just make a motion to direct you to finalize the resolution to present to council at a future meeting along with Administrator, Administrator Rich's recommendation of including homeowners at the time of planning how this vacate will look? Councillor Johnson made second that? Yep. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Uh, brings us to 6E, Resolution 22-25 Festival Designation, so again, in your packet is Resolution 22-25 authorizing consumption of alcoholic beverages in public places in Proctor in conjunction with festivals, you can see that. This will be alcoholic beverages in public places as approved by the Proctor Public Safety Committee during these community festivals and events, is there a motion to accept Resolution 22-25? I'll go ahead and make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Sent by councillor DeWalt, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Brings us to members' concerns, it's been a long time since we've been able to go around the table here, so councillor Peterson.
Well, I'll just, since I was absent for the last council meeting, I just want to say welcome back to councillor Johnson, it's nice to have the bookend here, and that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, councillor DeWalt. Thank you, councillor Johnson.
Um, just the community picnic at St. Rose last Thursday went really well, I think the attendance was down a little bit, but it was still, it's a good thing to have, just thank you.
Yep, I was saying before the meeting, that was the first one I had missed, but who's like, chief Gatus texted me and asked if I was coming, but I wish I could have. Councillor Benson.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for future meetings, I think it would be nice and appropriate if we could have like the city seal in the background, you know, we've got that beautiful screen and might as well try to make use of it.
Right on. Is that everything?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I just got a couple, the open house with PETA and NGP Development was well attended, it was, they put on a good presentation, and I think the community was excited for that, be exciting what the next few years will bring to Proctor. And then there are also a couple of hockhead meetings coming up, one was tonight, but I think that got canceled, the next one will be on Monday, July 28th, 5 o'clock at the VFW, and another one has been scheduled for August 4th at 5 o'clock at the VFW, they definitely could use some help with volunteer, so if anyone's interested, please attend those meetings and see where we can help out, that is all I have, Administrator Rich? Attorney Henka?
Nothing for me, Mr. Mayor.
Chief Gatus? Nothing? All right, that being said, we'll entertain a motion to approve the bills in the amount of $174,264.45.
So moved.
Who was that, councillor Peterson?
Second.
Sent by councillor DeWalt, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Councillor DeWalt made a motion to adjourn, is there a second? I'll second that, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes, thank you.